Hey, we will now call the June 27, 2022 Board of Trustees regular meeting to order. Entertainer motion for adoption of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Moved by Ms. Darby. Second by Ms. Waters. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. I know Dr. Frazier just walked in, so Dr. Frazier, how do you vote so we can...
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Frazier voted yes. Okay, that motion carries. A... entertaining motion for item one C approval of minutes.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Waters, second by Ms. Darby. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Dr. Frazier, I know you're still logging in. Did you have any questions about the minutes?
Yes.
You did not have any questions about a minute?
No.
How do you vote?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that motion carries. A... Item one D. I ask that you please pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. We ask that you please stand for pleasure of allegiance to the flag. Ms. Coats, would you lead us?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is safe, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Entertainer motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Waters for us to go into executive session. Everyone that's not a part of the executive session, item and discussion, if you would please excuse yourself at this time.
Yes.
You'll be directed and you'll be instructed when to return. Thank you.
September.
To reconvene back into open session. At this time now, we will have a public hearing on the budget.
Okay, Ms. Williams.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair and distinguished board. Today I will be presenting the second reading of the FY23 budget. There are two caveats that I'd like to cover in advance of the presentation. The first, the budget that we're presenting today has been modified from the first reading presented at the May 23rd board meeting. The revenues have been updated to reflect the impact of the new state funding formula. The second, during this presentation, I overview the changes between the first reading of the budget and today's recommended budget with a 6.3 mil increase. First slide, please. Changes since the first reading. Primarily, the state adopted a conference report using House version and Senate weights for the funding formula. This will be forwarded to the governor. They will reconvene on June 28th and ideally have an improved budget by the end of June. Regarding the revenue, our local revenue increased by approximately $144,000 due to a charge of school administrative fee. State revenues increased due to the conference committee version of the new state aid and state allocation. And aid to classroom allocation by about 3.6 million. Transfer revenues decreased due to the conference committee's version on indirect costs and EI teacher salaries infringed. The net impact of those three adjustments resulted into a $1.1 million increase to district's budget. Next slide, please. Regarding changes to the expenditures that you'll see today. We did move the teacher and non-teacher step cap from 28 years to 30 years. Strategies that we use to balance the FY23 budget. We shifted $3.1 million in special education staffing to the fund balance. And we also allocated an additional $1.3 million to the FY22 fund balance. This was due to additional cost savings initiatives. Just to name a few, the discretionary spend freeze, hiring freeze, and salary infringement savings. Those are the primary drivers for that 1.3 million. Regarding the fund balance total. With the budget adjustments and shift in revenue and expenditures, we were able to increase the projected fund balance for fiscal ending '23. From 128, which we presented in May, to $131 million. Next slide, please. Shifting over into the focus of the budget. The FY23 budget, it maintains the same educational focuses from the FY21 budget. These initiatives include early childhood, additional capacities at East and Meminger. Gifted and talented middle school honors, expansion of access to social emotional learning and mental health. Regarding salary incentives, we also provided $2,000 salary increase. Step increase and again moving the teacher step cap to 30 years. This also allows for a pay increase for all CCSD staff. Regarding the district's reading goals, that is primarily being funded out of the SIR3 pot of money and will not be reflected in this presentation. Next slide, please. Additional focuses on the budget. We, to balance the budget, we reduced the current year's spending in FY22. And we use that savings to help fund the FY23 initiatives. The increase in fund balance is still, has and still is leaving the district in a healthy financial position. Meeting our policy of DFAC, which is our fund balance policy, where we are in compliance with our minimum of 16.67%. And finally, the increase in local revenue reflects the intent of the state statute for the index of tax paying ability in Act 388. Next slide. Diving into the numbers. We'll walk you through the FY23 projected budget. So what we're proposing today is a 6.3 mil increase. Starting with the revenues, 640 million, which reflect the million dollar increase from the state funding formula. Once we back out the $614 million in expenses, it leaves us with a projected allocation of $26 million to close. To apply to the FY23 budget. Once we factor in the required increases, your teacher step, your salary increases, retirement increases, charge of school payments. Insurance increases, contractual obligations, and that includes your transportation, your custodial contracts, all which have natural inflators over time. We back out of the mission critical actions that were funded, that we anticipated to fund because of their natural conclusion. Those activities have concluded, so we're to cost avoidance of about $1.4 million. And learning services expansions, this is our special education positions, $3.1 million worth. We are funding that out of fund balance. Next slide, please. Other considerations, again, just showing the dollar amount, the 1.5 million. For the step, I'm sorry, for the cap increase to 30 years. Also, the non-tech teacher step with the addition of the step cap for non-teachers to 30 years as well. Our 2.3% COLA being provided, it keeps us at the 97%, 97% of market. Removing the classified salary cap costs us nearly a half a million dollars. And that puts our other considerations at 12 million, just 12 million on top of our must do's and our fixed expenses. So the projected funds available, the 26 million, we're applying that against our $45 million in expenditures, projected expenditures for FY23. That leaves an $18.7 million budget gap. Next slide, please. So the strategies that we use to balance this budget. We look, we, again, we initiated FY22 initiatives to save funds. So we did a, there's vacancy savings from salaries and fringe benefits. There's also the use of fund balance. So the spin freeze that we put into place in FY22 allows us additional savings to apply to the '23 budget. The special education positions are also being funded out of fund balance. And that, the culmination of those items, it actually balances our $18.7 million gap. It closes that gap. So what does this do to fund balance? Our fund balance is actually in a great position. So what we projected for fiscal '22 was to use $21 million out of our fund balance. We actually only used approximately 5 million. So we're able to put about 15 million back into fund balance. For our, in addition to For our, in addition to, excuse me, in addition to our additional savings, the $7 million from the salary infringed vacancies, as well as our spin freeze. We're actually ending our FY23 fund balance at 129 million versus what we presented at first reading, which was 127 million. Next slide, please. This slide, I'm going to defer to Mr. Brigman to present. This is an example of teacher positions that are impacted by the caps and steps.
Thank you, Shawna. I believe the board, I believe you all have seen this example we provided over the last month or so about how this decision impacts teachers. So it gives you an example of, of course, teachers, we are recommending a step as well as $2,000 for each teacher. And also expanding from step 26 on the teacher's salary schedule to step 30. So that's a great move for us. It really will take care and help our more experienced teachers who are in the classroom. So the first scenario there is really our bachelor's folks who have currently in our system who have zero steps. So that's a first-year teacher that was in our classroom this year. We also do have some master's teachers that had zero experience, and then we also show a doctorate. But really looking at our bachelor's at zero for the current school year that just ended. Our teachers were making right at $41,000. So as you go across to the right, you'll see the increase as that person moves to step one. And the salary projected for next year would be 44,000. The next grouping below, we've got bachelor's, master's, doctorate as well. But you have the step 15 teacher who moves to step 16. So if you note on the bachelor's degree, that teacher's right at 55,000 at step 15. And moving to step 16, it has proposed for '23 would move that teacher to a little over 58,000. Can see the same for the master's degree and the doctorate. The next grouping is a teacher moving from step 27 to 28. Now, of course, we propose to go out to step 30, but this is just an example of how that impacts that teacher. You'll see the bachelor's teacher at step 27 is currently at 66,242. This increase would move the bachelor's teacher to step 28 at 70,339. Are there any questions? Just really just showing an example, obviously, our teachers who are currently at step 29 moving to step 30, or if they're at step 30, would see the value of four steps. So that's a real positive to catch those teachers up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brigman. Next slide, please. Here, we wanted to reflect what the impact of a 6.3 mil increase is on the different taxpayer demographic groups. So the first slide you see is for owner-occupied properties. So for every assessed value of 434,000, there's no impact to owner-occupied properties at all. Please keep in mind, these assessed property values, they reflect all of the of the properties in Charleston County. This includes your really, really really pricey properties, as well as your more moderate price properties as well. Next slide, please. For non-owner occupied, for every $437,000 assessed, the taxpayer pays $165.19. Next slide, please. For commercial real property, for every $1.7 million, the taxpayer pays $633.26. Next slide, please. For automobiles assessed for $20,000, the taxpayer pays $7.56. And for personal property, I'm sorry, next slide. For personal property, for every 10,000 assessed, the taxpayer pays $6.61. Next slide. So here in the budget that we presented in FY23, just to recap, we are recommending a 6.3 mil increase. And although expenditures exceeded revenues for FY23, we were able to balance the budget with use of fund balance, all while adding back to the fund balance in addition to keeping board initiatives from prior years for the continuity for our students and staff and employees. This concludes FY23's second reading. Any questions, please?
Okay, at this time, is there any public members that are here that would like to ask questions in reference to the budget? You may do so at this time, if you could just support the podium.
Hi, my name is Shondell Hand, and I had a question whether any adjustments have been made in this round or final round of budgeting regarding the implications of Proviso 197 that will most likely be signed into law tomorrow as there are additional funding needs for athletics at academic magnet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
In the response to the question about Proviso 1.97, in this budget, there's no additional revenue that's been allocated from the state, not from the district, to support the 1.97 proviso in the FY23 state budget.
I should have clarified, is there any money in the district budget supporting academic magnet to support Proviso 197?
Again, there's not been any explicit allocation from FY23 budget associated with the 1.97 proviso.
Okay, thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Any additional questions from anyone from the public? Okay, thank you. All right, what do you have with us today? All right, let's go ahead and move forward with the special recognition, and we've had guests waiting for a period of time. And then we will move right into our executive session. I didn't support it.
Good evening, Chairman Mack, Vashia Waters, members of the Board of Trustees, Mr. Kennedy. This evening for special recognition, we are excited to honor several outstanding educators and students. Tonight, we have several of our student athletes and coaches who've won state championships in their respective sports during the spring season. We honored nearly half of our spring South Carolina High School League state champions last month, and we will celebrate the rest tonight, this afternoon. You will notice that all of our student athletes present will be wearing their special Board of Trustees state championship medals given to them by you all to recognize our outstanding athletic accomplishments this year. The first team we will recognize will be the Wando Girls Lacrosse Team. The Warriors won the 5A state championship by edging Riverside 10 to 1 in the title game on April 30th in Ermo. This is the Warriors' first state title since 2011. First at the level of 5A and second overall in the program's history. Wando finished the season with a 17-1 record. In addition, Kelsey Bennett and Ava Delara were selected as All-Americans and Maddy Wood is an academic All-American. Let's give them a round of applause. The head coach is Mr. Ed Reckenwal. And the assistant coaches are Brian Wood, Haley Moore, Sophie Moore, Chelsea Reckenwal, and Jessie Bunting. Let's give them a round of, oh, Reverend Mack, please join us for photographs. Wando's Athletics Director is Mark Buckman. South Carolina Coaches Association of Women's Sports 5A Lacrosse Player of the Year. One more note for the Wando Girls Lacrosse Program is Kelsey Bennett. Kelsey isn't joining us tonight, but she is the 5A Girls Lacrosse Player of the Year. Let's give her a round of applause. Next up is James Allen Charter High School. They won the 4A Girls Soccer State Title for the second year in a row. The Trojans finished the season with a 20 to 1 to 2 record. The varsity roster includes seniors Lily Ray, Kate Ross, Haley Boyd, Kayla McGray, and Camille Perna, juniors Olivia Bugs, Taylor Hurtow, Mac Leir, and Hayden Rate. The sophomores include Carol Lee Arnold, Ellie Davis, Clara Maddie Redman, Daphne Robinson, Alexis Spivey, Marley Walker, and Ella Witz, and freshman Kitty Campbell. Let's give them a round of applause. Next on the track and field. For the 5A level, we have Wando High School's Hannah Tagami, who won the girls' pole vault completion for the second year in a row. She's a junior and she cleared 13 feet 1 inches to set a new state record. Thank you. On the boys' side, we have Wando's Jake Liebert, who won the 3200 meter run. 4A level, James Allen Charter High School's girls' track and team field won four golds on their way to a third-place finish in team standings. Senior Tia Lucas won the girls' high jump for the second year in a row. She cleared five foot 2 inches on her way to victory. Sophomore Hannah Roan captured the state title in the 1600 meter run for the second year in a row. Avery Belk, who's a freshman, repeated as the state champion in the 800 meter race. And the Trojans 4x800 girls relay team finished first for another state championship. Let's give them a round of applause. Nicola Visser of Lucy Beckham High School. She's an eighth grader. She won the girls' pole vault state championship by clearing 11 feet 7 inches. This is the school's first state title in the sport. At the 1A level, St. John's High School finished in second place in the girls' team standing thanks in part to three gold medals. Sophomore Thylasia Alston won the state championship in the 400 meter race. Rowan Strobel, a freshman, finished first in the high jump with a height of 4 feet 10 inches. Thylasia Alston, Hannah Collins, Dinesha Sutton, and Daisha Buford won the title in the 4x400 relay, 4x400 meter relay. Let's give them a round of applause. And Jaden Judge, a junior at St. John's High School, captured the boys' discus title. Let's give him a round of applause as well. Thank you. Next, we'd like to congratulate CCSD Facilities Management Department for receiving four Best in Class Awards in Efficient and Healthy Schools Campaign sponsored by the United States Department of Energy and the United States Environmental Protection Agency and the United States Department of Education. The campaign provides recognition and technical assistance to school districts seeking to implement high-impact indoor air quality and efficiency improvements that will improve student and teacher health and reduce energy bills. CCSD, along with eight other school districts in the nation, received Best in Class Awards across four categories. Efficient HVAC Technologies, Inspection and Maintenance, Ongoing Monitoring and Analytics, and Team Approach to Support Strategic Investments. Accepting the award for CCSD is David Warren, who is our Engineering and Asset Management Officer. He oversees our design requirements and is responsible for design and execution of our capital maintenance HVAC process. And Robbie Waltz, our Environmental Officer and Interim Maintenance Officer, who is responsible for maintaining our HVAC systems. You'll hear more about Mr. Waltz in just a few. We want to congratulate the CCSD Facilities Management Department for this great accomplishment. Next, we'd like to congratulate Mr. Robbie Waltz, the Environmental Officer and Interim We'd like to congratulate Mr. Robbie Waltz, the Environmental Officer and Interim Maintenance Officer for the CCSD Facilities Management Department for being named the National School Plant Management Association's Plant Manager of the Year. And self-product of CCSD schools, Mr. Waltz worked his way up through facilities management, working as an HVAC mechanic from 2007 to 2012, earning an Assistant HVAC Foreman position in 2012. In 2015, he earned the position of Foreman of our landmark Tiger Teams, a highlight of his development of a Tiger Team Principal Survey System that allowed the district to focus on needs expressed by school principals. As coronavirus took hold of our area two years ago, Mr. Waltz developed a program to convert all HVAC filters to MERV 13 or higher in addition to adjusting set points and runtimes for all of our HVAC equipment to maximize fresh air. Under his initiative and leadership, he deployed a first-in-the-nation MERV 14 filter for our 1,000-plus wall-hung HVAC units. He was truly one of a handful of operations leaders who helped navigate the district, who helped the district navigate COVID-19 and reopen its students in person in September 2020, months ahead of other school districts in the nation. Let's congratulate Mr. Robbie Waltz on his outstanding accomplishment. And we'd also like to congratulate the Charles Pinckney Chess Team State Champions. To round out our special recognitions this evening, we have with us Coach Chagrin and other members of the Charles Pinckney Elementary School Chess Team Principal Tiffany Henderson, among the team organizer and sponsor gifted and talented teacher E.C. Setzer, who's joining via Zoom tonight. When extracurricular activities shut down across the state due to the COVID-19 pandemic in March 2020, Pinckney Elementary School's chess team got creative. They used a combination of Zoom and the website ChessKid to continue delivering weekly lessons to students remotely. On April 2nd, 2022, their perseverance paid off as 15 Pinckney students traveled to Greenville to play in the South Carolina State Scholastic Chess Championships, and they won. Only four of their students had ever played chess in an in-person chess tournament before the event. But despite the lack of experience, they were extremely successful, and we congratulate they were extremely successful, and we congratulate them. This concludes our special recognitions for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. The next thing on our, item on our agenda is public comments. We do have some in-person public comments today. And as soon as I find my sheet, we'll get to it.
I'm sorry, I buried it.
Do we have Ms. Shondale Hand in the room? You have two minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with all of you today and collectively for all that you do to support our students and families in Charleston County. I'm Shondale Hand, and I'm the current president of the PTSO of Academic Magnet, advocating for parents, teachers, and students to urge CCSD and the school board to honor commitments to our school as well, as well as to all of constituent four, District Four. As part of the $3.4 million Academic Magnet settlement, the board and CCSD confirmed on January 24 they would allocate $350,000 of this settlement to support track renovations at Danny Jones. This settlement would not only support the Academic Magnet, but all D4 schools, and they also said they would meet the needs of our principal, which includes a full-time A.D. The remaining $3 million of the Academic Magnet settlement was allocated to support non-D4 schools. Today, CCSD is proposing to use these funds not for track improvements, but for technology upgrades at North Charleston. This means that not $1 of the $3.4 million is going to Academic Magnet. As a parent group and a member of the SIC, and as I'm sure you all received this letter, we work in partnership with our other D4 schools. We just ask that the school board and the district honor the commitments they've made to us. One rationale CCSD suggests to make this change is that Academic Magnet can use the Military Magnet track. Other speakers will address these details of why this is not viable. Additionally, the rationale that the Danny Jones track is no longer an option doesn't provide a complete picture. We understand as an alternative, CCSD agreed to look into an investment in the D4 stadium to add a track, softball, and baseball fields, all of which would support all of D4 and provide a stadium that is in keeping with other constituent districts. We hope to ask you today for an update on the status of that project as well as what the next steps are in order to support Academic Magnet's student athletes and all of those in District Four.
Thank you, Ms. Hand. Is Tara Griffin in the room?
Good afternoon, and thank you to the school board and CCSD leadership for allowing me to address you. Thank you for your diligent work for our school district, our students, and our families of Charleston County. I am the current president of Academic Magnet High School's Booster Club. I'm here today to represent our student athletes, our coaches, and our parents. I implore you to consider the financial needs of our athletic department and facility needs. In addition to the concerns from the Academic Magnet settlement dollars, Academic Magnet Athletic Department finds itself in a dire financial situation. The recent passing of the non-budgeted-related proviso 1.97 in our state budget dictates that Academic Magnet High School will absorb 1,100 additional students from SOA into our student athletic attendance count. With an unknown and untethered athletic involvement number, we need additional funding budgeted for additional uniforms, equipment, coaches, and facility needs. Last, we need budgeting for a full-time athletic director to handle the additional duties and workload of a school now with an 1,800 student athlete attendance count. This unexpected increase in our student attendance count cannot be managed with our current budget. We did not ask for this increase to our student count, but we have now been mandated by state legislature to absorb it through proviso 1.97. As a result, we need your assistance to provide a safe and competitive athletic department at Academic Magnet. Thank you for your consideration for our needs and understanding our new plight created by proviso 1.97, which was recently signed into our state budget. Thank you for your time and effort to help our students, our student athletes, and our coaches with our upcoming 2022-2023 season.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gwen Hofstetter?
Gwen was not able to attend, but I am here in her place, if that is okay.
That's okay.
Okay. My name is Kristin Coulter, and I am the Chair of the Academic Magnet High School School Improvement Council. I am reading this on behalf of our track and field coaches, Gwen Hofstetter and Brian Johnson. We had over 80 athletes, I'm sorry. The Academic Magnet Track and Field Program has not only been successful on a local, region, and at state level, but also successful in national and international competitions. We have over 80 athletes on the team this year and earned many accomplishments without a proper track facility on our campus. We spend many practices in the school bus loop. While we had some of the top athletes in 3A in pole vault, high jump, and hurdles, these athletes had to find public facilities on the weekends to practice their events because of the lack of facilities on or around our campus. In the facility we are expected to share at Military Magnet does not have bars or mats for jumping events. While James Island, Wando, Lucy Beckham, St. John's, West Ashley, Stoll, and now Burke currently have rubberized tracks in all field event facilities on or adjacent to their campuses, three North Charleston schools, Military Magnet, North Charleston, and Academic Magnet are expected to share a facility. Over 120 total athletes practice at the same time, while the Military Magnet Soccer Team is also practicing in the same space. In fact, if a soccer game is taking place, track and field practice has to be canceled or limited for all three schools. Additionally, youth groups are using the same track at the same time as the three high schools. Young children are present and on the track at the same time as the high school athletes. It is not only unequitable that these three schools are asked to share a track, and two teams of student athletes must travel just to practice. While all other district high schools have dedicated facilities, it is unfair to these student athletes, unfair to the Military Magnet Soccer Team, and potentially unsafe to the numerous student athletes and young children concurrently using this track. We ask that the $350,000 allocated for running track refreshments stay dedicated to North Charleston High and Academic Magnet track facilities.
Thank you. Was you, were you Kristin Coulter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Oh, that was, I had you on the list as well. I just wanted to make sure.
I have another comment if I can read it, but if I have to use just her time, that's fine.
Is that? I've actually, I've never had that in my time. So just let me confirm. That's fine, okay, that's fine.
Okay. So, Skipley, I'm Kristin Coulter. As part of constituent District Four, Academic Magnet High School is asked to share numerous athletic practice spaces and facilities with other schools. This includes our track and field student athletes asked to share track at Military Magnet with Military Magnet and North Charleston. It is my understanding all other high schools in the Charleston County School District with track and field teams have dedicated facilities that includes full-size tracks as well as equipment for track and field events. But like many of our Academic Magnet teams, we are asked to make do with lesser and shared resources, as are North Charleston, Military Magnet, and often Stoll. This was noted in a letter that myself and other SIC chairs from North Charleston and Stoll sent to the board and the superintendent back in May. As part of a settlement regarding Academic Magnet High School's former campus, the district received $3.4 million. At a January 24 meeting, the board voted to allocate the majority of this settlement money to projects in other constituent districts, including athletic projects, football stadium jumbotrons, and a press box. Academic Magnet and North Charleston combined were to receive $350,000 in support of track renovations at Danny Jones. It was noted during the meeting that the track, that the Danny Jones Upgrade Project was already in process by the city of North Charleston, and an upgraded track was not part of the plan. But the $350,000 was allocated to various schools, namely Academic Magnet and North Charleston. Subsequent talks by CCSD and the city of North Charleston identified potential space at the District Four Stadium for a track and future baseball and football fields, facilities which are also not offered at North Charleston or Academic Magnet High Schools. On behalf of the current and future student athletes of Academic Magnet, North Charleston, and Military Magnet, I ask that you keep the $350,000 you have already allocated to Academic Magnet and North Charleston and use it as intended for track facilities to benefit both of these schools. Academic Magnet should receive some funding from a settlement regarding Academic Magnet.
Thank you. Our last in-person public comment comes from Mr. Quinn Swanton.
Hello, my name is Quinn Swan, of course. I'm a rising sophomore from Academic Magnet High School who recently competed at a national meet in Eugene, Oregon, Nike Outdoor Nationals. And of course, I'm on the side that we should receive a track because it's just hard to build a team around a bus loop. I think that not only if we, instead of running on pavement around Danny Jones or a bus loop or just the streets, if we had utilities, we could not only perform better, but build a better community, build a better team. And especially with the new influx of the SOA students, I think it's just going to be incredibly hard to run on a, on a track with holes in every single lane. And I know a lot of my friends have to compete and train not as a team. So let's say my friend, he does pole vault, but he competes all the way in Park West and Mount Pleasant instead of North Charleston, where we actually, we all are a team together. We, we also recently, I mean, we competed at states. And I think that with as much talent as our team has, we just don't have the utilities and the resources to fully express that talent. And with this track, we will be able to express that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you. We did receive two additional comments online pertaining to the same matter. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Waters. We have moved around in our agenda. However, we do need to go back and take here some executive session items that has been discussed. And I want to go back to item 5A.
I've got a motion.
Okay, Ms. Darby.
I recommend for the Health Advisory Committee vacancies for clergy, number, or number, letter A. For medical, A and B, there's two seats open. For the parent seat, A and B, there's two seats open. For the teacher seat, there's just one. I recommend move for B. And then for the student, A and B.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Dr. French, are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please, I'm sorry.
It's A, then A, B, then- A, B, and then B, and then A, B. The teacher is just B. Sorry about that.
Can you, can you just walk over and just make sure you got it right? Okay, we ask that you please cast your vote. Got it, item passes, item 5B.
Move for approval.
Is there a second? Move by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Hederich, are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Got it, item passes 9-0, item 5C.
A move to uphold the constituent board's decision.
Move by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Waters, are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote.
Yes.
Got it, item passes 9-0, item 5D.
A move to uphold the constituent board decision.
Move by Ms. Darby, second by Dr. French, are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Item passes 9-0, item 5E.
A move to uphold the constituent board decision.
Move by Ms. Darby, second by Dr. French, are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Okay, that item passes 9-0, item 5F.
Move for approval.
Is there a second? Move by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Green, are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Got it, item passes 9-0, item 5G.
A move that we appoint Ms. Rob Tyson, Wilbur Johnson, and Elizabeth Stringer as hearing officers per policy GCQF.
She needs you to repeat.
Rob Tyson, Wilbur Johnson, and Elizabeth Stringer.
Got it, motion made by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Waters. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Got it, item passes 9-0. Item 5H was receipt of information. Item 5I was receipt of information. Item 5J was receipt of information- Item 5J was receipt of information.
And I have a motion.
Okay.
I moved to supplement the letter dated January 3rd, 2022, to appoint Mr. Kennedy Superintendent of the Charleston County School District with the updates discussed in executive session.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Move by Ms. Darby, second by Dr. Frazier, are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote.
Okay. With the updates discussed in executive session.
Okay, we ask that you please cast your vote. Cut that item passes seven two. Remove the item nine A Superintendent's Report. Mr. Kennedy.
We have one item on the superintendent's report this evening, and that would be district highlights by Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, board members. Our district highlights for this evening as follows. A CCSD HVAC technician, Josh Wright, worked with students at the Cooper River Center for Advanced Studies Maker Space and Building Construction Program this spring to craft a wooden engraved memorial flag to honor the Charleston Nine. Wright and Principal Vanessa Brown presented the flag to the Charleston Fire Department last week at a ceremony. Three schools from CCSD, East Cooper Center for Advanced Studies, James Island Charter High School, and Charleston Charter Math for Math and Science all earned distinguished high school honors from Project Lead the Way this year. Charleston Charter also was recognized as a Gateway School Award for project, for the Project Lead the Way course offerings at the middle school level. Last week, we celebrated district and school staff members who retired at this year's retirement banquet, which was hosted and held next door at the Gil Yard Center. By Mr. Burrow's calculations, the now former CCSD employees combined for over 1,000 years of service in our district. More great news from the graduating class of 2022, they combined to earn more than $67 million in scholarships. Wanda High School won the Carlisle Cup for the seven year in a row. The honor goes to the school with the best overall performance in the South Carolina High School League Playoffs for All Sports. The Warriors won at the 5A level. Montessori Community School earned the district's Wellness Award for the 2021-2022 school year. The MUSC Boeing Center for Children's Wellness partners with the district for this initiative, which encourages schools in CCSD to build health and wellness into their school community. The James Allen Cultural Center showcased work from fifth graders from James Allen Elementary School for the past few weeks. It was a part of an initiative titled "An Exercise in Empathy." Each child chose a photo from the 1960s, researched it and recreated it, and those photos were on display for the community to see. And lastly, five graduating seniors from early college high school participated in the second annual Teach Local Signing Day, which was hosted last month. They are all pursuing degrees in education in college and have committed to teaching in our district when they graduate. Mr. Kennedy, that concludes the district highlights for today.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. So moving to the Education Committee, we have two presentations. The first one is on the Spring Fast Bridge data that the district has received. And Ms. Michelle Simmons will lead that presentation along with Ms. Butter Roberts.
Thank you. Good evening, Reverend Mac, Vice Chair Waters, our esteemed board. Mr. Kennedy and to our viewing public, today's SEC update will feature, as Mr. Kennedy stated, fast bridge indicators as well as an acceleration school update to follow. So fast bridge indicators essentially provides us with information about how well our kindergarten and first grade scholars are developing and retaining those early reading and early numeracy skills. It also tells us who might be at risk of not performing adequately appropriately regarding grade level readiness. So if I could take the liberty to speak really plainly about the following slides. Where you see green bars, that means our students ideally where we want all students to be are presenting low risk factors. Yellow, meaning there are some risk factors present, there's some areas to be concerned about. And then where you see the red, meaning students are presenting high risk factors where we have to figure out where their barriers are to their learning. So let's get into a few slides. We decided early into the pandemic, understanding the impact that COVID-19 would have on student learning, that we would target and focus on learning loss with the goal, Ms. Waters, with the goal of getting back to pre-pandemic levels. As depicted on this presentation slide, we have made some strides toward reducing the percentage of students presenting high risk factors as well as increasing those presenting low risk factors from those pre-pandemic numbers of about 60%. I'm still on the, yes. So we wanted to frame for you where we stood before the pandemic, how we feared last school year and where we are now. So from 20, the 2021 school year until this year, we've seen modest progress in the right direction. This next slide simply shows the breakdown by grade of how many of our smallest, our youngest scholars are presenting as low risk, demonstrating some risk factors, and those at high risk of not reading on grade level. We wanted to highlight a few of the schools who are among those that were able to make a considerable impact from fall to spring, increasing the percentage of students demonstrating low risk factors. You might wonder, what are these programs doing to achieve this success? So if you were to hear directly from those school teams, those principals, you would hear common themes among them. One of which was a non-negotiable focus on phonemic awareness and decoding skills. Also, principal spoke of the consistent and frequent progress monitoring of academic progress. When we commit to progress monitoring regularly, routinely, we not only are able to ascertain how well our students are doing, but it also tells us how well students are responding to our instruction and our interventions. And finally, school teams speak about having the time, the regular collaboration time, regular planning time, and the conversations around expectations. What do we expect to happen during a teaching and learning period from both our scholars and our teachers? So the next cluster of slides, we won't spend a lot of time on each one. But we thought it important to show you how groups of students are fair. We typically typically present the data regarding our averages, on average, how students are doing. We thought it important to show you how groups of students are faring along subgroups. And so the next few slides along race, English proficiency, special needs, and poverty present a few big themes. One of which is we do have definite gaps in performance between groups of students. But in large part, we are rebounding, we are recovering from a challenging space of COVID implications last year. We do believe that the strategy is connected to our curriculum pilots as well as our investments in ESR to target our ESOL population, making sure we have a robust curriculum that all students can ascertain successfully will get us closer and closer to the goal of readiness, grade level readiness and proficiency. At this time, my colleague Ms. Roberts will speak to math indicators for fast bridge.
So good afternoon. Now we're going to look at our fast bridge math results. As Ms. Simmons shared earlier, because of the pandemic's impact on student learning, our current goal has been to recover learning loss and get back to where we were pre-pandemic. As you can see here on this slide, overall, we not only met this goal in math for our kindergarten students this this current spring, but we actually exceeded the pre-pandemic goal. Over the past two years, the percentage of students in low risk has increased by 10 percentage points. We've also highlighted a few of the schools that made notable progress this fall to spring in increasing the percentage of students demonstrating low risk for math difficulties. We did find similarities among these schools as well. And like reading, the same best practices include frequent progress monitoring of student learning, regular teacher collaboration and planning time, and high expectations with grade level content and standards for all student learning. The next few slides show early learning math performance by subgroup. There are two trends that you will see among our race and ethnicity, English proficiency, special education, and poverty or low socioeconomic status subgroups. One, we're still seeing persistent gaps in performance amongst subgroups. And two, we are also however, seeing an upper trend or positive progress in math performance in all groups of learners. We believe that this is in large part a result of providing a more consistent viable math curriculum that brings guaranteed learning experiences in all schools across our system. Additionally, through our ESR investments, targeting access to pre-K programming, our needs of needs of our multilingual learners, wraparound services for our most vulnerable students and families, and by ensuring attention to student engagement in school will reduce those gap-causing barriers with which some of our scholars enter school and continue to experience while in school. So now I'll turn it over to Ms. Belcher, who will show results for our acceleration schools along with our next steps.
Good evening. It's good to see everyone. Ms. Roberts, can you just give me a thumbs up if you can hear me? Thank you. The we, I just want to call out as we look at the acceleration schools, clearly like the rest of the district, we're making progress in math in this, in the acceleration school. So we have more students who are at low risk and less students who are at high risk relatively to where we've been. Unfortunately, we see an increase in high-risk students and a decrease in low-risk students in early reading. At this point, we hypothesize that this is because the focus in these past schools has really been on the new ERA curriculum modules, not necessarily the skills piece, which are the content units that are focused on reading fluency, comprehension, and building student knowledge as they are exposed to broad level text. As we're making this transition, we did, we opted to stick with Open Core, which was our phonics program, and Haggerty's, which is our phonemic awareness program, so that we would minimize change for teachers and try to make sure our focus was on adapting the new modules. But we do believe that this causes split focus because the two curriculum don't are different and have different styles. And this should be addressed in the coming year as these schools move to adopt the phonics and phonemic awareness portions or the skills block portion of EL. We want to make sure that the board understands the full ERA curriculum pilot. So our plan is in our next board meeting to go through EL and make sure you understand the components, how it operates, and where we are in the pilot initiative. Our focus right now is also making sure that as we saw, that we saw a dip among our Latinx students or Hispanic students, particularly ESL learners. We want to make sure we pay particular attention to those students and decide if we need to make some adjustments and how we're teaching phonics and phonemic awareness. This was already a strategy as part of our SR3 efforts to make sure that we're better addressing our instructional program for English language learners. And then we want to make sure we save the course with mathematics, even as we focus on improving reading. There's a risk that that lack of attention will lose the progress we've already made in mathematics. We want to ensure that that does not happen by institutionalizing new teacher support around the mathematics curriculum, regular walkthroughs. And as Ms. Roberts and Ms. Simmons said, highlighting looking at data and adjusting in real time based on student performance. And then obviously, we want to continue our access to pre-K because some of our academic pre-K programs at Little Hill, Midland Park, and Mary Ford have shown very promising results across both reading and mathematics. And then finally, we want to make sure that we're stepping back and using our plans, study, do, act effort to make sure that we are adapting those strategies that work well. And I know you may have some questions, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Simmons and Ms. Roberts to field those, and they'll call on me if they need me.
Okay, are there any questions from any board members? All right, Ms. Waters and then Ms. Coates.
I just had a clarifying question, because I heard Ms. Belcher, but I didn't, not completely clearly, that she's attributing the acceleration schools' scores to the fact that we, in in reading, to the fact that the ELA curriculum was not completely rolled out. So the phonics portion was missing, and that's what.
Right, that that's an essence, what Ms. Belcher was trying to capture in terms of the rollout. And Ms. Haynes is here, she can speak to it more as well. In the acceleration schools, the rollout wasn't the comprehensive curriculum, but parts of it.
Okay, and then as a follow-up, so on the math piece, they're using the new, the complete new.
So we've been rolling out bridges for five years almost, and so that has had the time and the effort and the work put into immersing the system with those curriculum pieces.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Coates.
Sure. What is a low-risk factor of not reading on grade level mean?
So when we think about developmental milestones, we're looking at early reading skills in terms of phonics, phonemic awareness, can students rhyme? Are they able to identify syllables? And so when they take the test, it's more or less trying to give us a gauge on whether or not they have met particular milestones. Middle of the year, end of the year, beginning of the year, and so if they're demonstrating low risk factors, that means they're on target, they're on track, they're ready to negotiate grade level content, grade level material, grade level standards.
So are you telling me that 57% of the kids that are going into the first grade in August are ready to read on first grade level the first day they're there?
They're ready. So I think the, about a year ago when we did this presentation, we made particular, we made certain to emphasize that fast bridge and say map or SC Ready is not necessarily one for one. They don't measure the exact same things, whereas fast bridge, we're looking at those developmental milestones, just readiness. And SC Ready and map, we're actually looking at achievement. Did you achieve a skill? So we won't always see 57% entered ready, so 57 or more should exit ready. The idea though, is to capture everybody who is either low risk, moderate risk, and make sure that we build. We add on, we add value to their learning in a way where they do exit every grade successfully and ready to. in a way where they do exit every grade successfully and ready to do the next grade's level work.
I'm just confused. I don't know what that means. I don't know, you get to the end of kindergarten, into K5, you're ready to go into first grade. Are they ready or are they almost ready or are they risk-ready? I mean, are, you know, we're using these phrases, and I'm just trying to figure out how many kids ended first grade and are ready to leave first grade on first grade level? I mean, just.
Give it a shot.
I'm not sure why I'm not following it, but it seems a little convoluted.
The way the assessment works is it provides those measures, those categories.
What are those measures?
Risk, some risk and high risk. And what low risk is referring to? When we think about FastBridge, it's more of a generalized achievement. The students would be in a range somewhere around the 40th to 99th percentile. So it's a generalized range. When you say low risk, you do not mean that a student necessarily doesn't have any risk for reading or math difficulties. But their risk is so low that they fall into that category. That's the way that assessment works. What that assessment does do, however, is gives us very specific information about what we need to do to make sure that that student is ready.
Is ready when?
During the time of instruction. So like at the beginning of the year where that student might score.
So this is spring 2022. So what do you use this spring 2022 information to do?
We use it for a few things. Schools look at that information when they're thinking about how they're going to plan for instruction for students for the next year because they have access to that data. We also utilize that to kind of see like where our, how our programs are being implemented. We do comparisons along the lines of looking at, you know, how other factors might have impacted that data. So there are lots of reasons why we might look at that data.
And I maybe, I'm sure that smarter minds than me could probably dissect what that means. I'm just going back to three years ago when we began early childhood education. And the goal of that was that first grade kids entered first grade, ready to be first graders. And I can't hear y'all say that now, three years later, about any of our students. I'm looking to hear that connection from those three years' worth of Mary Ford or three years' worth of those investments. We did that so that they would enter first grade ready to read, and I haven't heard that yet.
Couple of things, Ms. Coats. So we have a couple of assessments. KRA, kindergarten readiness. So that's telling us, are they able to successfully enter kindergarten, do well? And then the same thing with FastBridge. They really are screeners, not achievement tests. And so that's why I tried to make the distinction between an achievement test and a screener. But to be fair, we placed a note in board docs that we would have small group sessions with board members. So we can go deeper and get a little bit more clarity around what each assessment means, what the implications are for such. And so I think that is warranted and why we place that note in there that perhaps this might not be the best venue and opportunity to go deep, but we have a plan to do those in small group sessions with board members.
Thank you. I just want it to be done in the context of the same people that sat in front of us three years ago and said, these multimillion-dollar investments were going to do something. We didn't say they were going to make better screeners. They didn't say we're going to introduce low-risk factors. They said, give us this money and then these investments so that children enter first grade. I'd love to understand that, but I want it in that context. That was the commitment made to us. Where are we in that commitment?
Yes, ma'am.
I think I was probably one of the people who made that commitment, Mrs. Van Coats. And I guess I would say, if you look at the math results and seeing that across all demographics, we're going in the right direction and higher than pre-pandemic levels. The reason they're not saying they're on grade levels because that's not exactly what the test measures. And unfortunately, the precision of language is why we're saying high risk, low risk. That's what it measures. It doesn't measure grade level. So we have to be as precise, but it's the best metric we've got for early childhood, which is kind of noisy because again, this test is individually administered by a teacher. The kids are reading the questions. And so we see that there's some variation because they also can't sit still for a very long period of time. So it's a shorter test than something like the MAP test or other things. But for the best of our ability, this is a good signal that kids are on track, most definitely in mathematics, and to a lesser extent, improving to pre-pandemic levels in reading, which is good news.
Okay, Dr. French.
Yes, thank you. So I'm glad that you talked about what the schools felt they were doing well, that we're helping them succeed. And I guess one of the questions I have is when you look at the high-risk students, for instance, are they primarily not in those schools? Or are they in schools where those kinds of things aren't happening? Does that help to explain the differences you're seeing in our students being ready? Or being at low risk versus high risk?
Every school has students with high-risk factors. Those noted have maybe some higher levels, some of them. But you see a variance among the schools. You see Title I schools listed and non-Title I schools listed. But every school has high-risk factors in them. I think the schools have found, we wanted to highlight four or five. That's not to say they're the only four or five that made significant or sizable outcomes. We just couldn't feature them all. But all of the schools are progress monitoring. When you get deeper into the schools, you may find the frequency at which they progress monitor may be different. And so what was just common among these four was that they held to a rather routine, regular schedule of progress monitoring. You would have it done weekly or bi-weekly. And so I don't want to give the impression that all of our elementary schools aren't doing some of these same strategies. These were just the ones they called out in this group.
And then, so you know, for the math, outcomes are really good. It's really good to see progress in almost every group. Unfortunately, I think it's Hispanic that didn't do as well in that, on the math, maybe. But.
The reading was particularly noteworthy, I think, with the Latinx group, ma'am.
Okay, right. So but, but overall, it looks like there's definitely progress, which is, which is definitely good. With the ELA, I guess one of the things that's concerning is to see, you know, a number go down, you know, the lowest numbers go down from the fall to the spring when you would expect there to be progress. And I guess I don't know if that just means that some of the risk factors weren't identified with those students or, you know, I realize, I recognize it's an assessment tool and it's not perfect. But I guess I do feel a little concerned that the trend wasn't good for the year, even though we started better than we ended last year.
And one, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And one of the things that could possibly help explain some of that is the way that assessment works is different skills might be assessed at different times depending on where you are during the school year. Because there are some skills that should have been, you know, mastered earlier in the year or mid-year and then in that endpoint. So that could be some of that variation that you talk about.
And then, am I hearing correctly in your action in response to this data that you're going to make sure that as you implement the EL curriculum, all of the components are part of the implementation, especially the phonetics, which is clearly important at this age level?
Right, that we have a plan. So we had been doing open court for the last few years. And with EL, phonics is embedded. And so just making sure that we have a plan as we roll out curriculum that that phonics piece is addressed in a systematic and explicit way.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions? Thank you so much for your report. Item 10B, acceleration school update.
Oh, thank you, I remember that. So we have, I'm going to give a quick overview, give the acceleration school updated in the context of the overall reading vision of the district. And then Ms. Belcher, Chief Academic Officer, will do part of the presentation on specifics on the acceleration schools along with Ms. Jackie Haynes. So as we all know, we adopted a few months ago this reading vision, having all of our, next slide, please. I have all of our students reading on grade level by grade five, focused on these three particular areas here, these three pillars. And as you also know, that we have, we are investing a substantial amount of ESOL dollars and other funding sources into these particular areas along with accountability and supports, engagement and voice. So the conversation that just took place with the FastBridge data is trying to show progress, obviously with the math that's been in place for several years. That we've been able to show some of that progress. The slide I'm going to show now shows the, some of the real challenges trying to make sure that we get all of our kids to be able to read on grade level here. So this, next slide, please. This line graph here plots going back to the spring of 2005 and going through last, spring of last year, the MAP scores that projects where students are going to land on the South Carolina Ready Achievement. And so you can see in 2005, beginning in 2006, on the left-hand side, there we start to make and start making progress. It went from 35% in the spring of 2005 up through, up to 49% of our kids showing that they would project to be reading on grade level based on the South Carolina Achievement Test. So in spring of 2011, that it gone to 49%. The next year, it dropped off and it's leveled off since then. In the spring of 2020, right the year before the pandemic, you see the big gap there. We weren't tracking because of the, I'm not showing that because of the pandemic. But then after the pandemic, we still see that that line is flat. And so as we talk about our reading goals, I mean, this is the compelling reason why we need to have a reading goal. And if you, if you actually, which we've done, looking at the the data from last spring of last year, we've disaggregated those numbers or broken those out by demographics. So 51%, roughly 51% of our students reading below grade level. And then if you break that down, 82%, 82% of African-American students read below grade level with 74, 75% of children in poverty below grade level and another with Hispanic students, roughly the same, 74, 75%. So the question is then, you know, as we, as we invest the dollars that we, that we're investing over the years, how do we probe the system to make sure where we're seeing gains, where we're seeing that where things are working, that we're able to replicate that? And where things are not working, that we've implemented, that we can shift gears and make sure that we get the things in place that we need to. Next slide, please. So this slide here shows a typical growth over with students. And this shows at the bottom here of this line graph says a second grader that's one year below grade level. A second grade student, one year below grade level. Now, now remember, the intent is to have all students reading on grade level by the fifth grade. And so if we show the typical growth of a student that's already behind, one grade level behind, if we just show one year's growth, one year of growth each year, by the time that child gets to the fifth grade, the child is still going to be below grade level. And so then we need to figure out at the top of this line graph here, how do we then accelerate the actual growth? So in this example here, 1.5 years of growth each year versus the 1.0. And if we can obtain that, then the students, when they reach the fifth grade, would be on grade level. And so the question in that we are asking ourselves here, why is it over, it's been so persistent over time where we've tried so many things and we haven't had the success, the sustained success? And where we are approaching that, we're trying to get to the root causes. We're trying to deal with it from a system standpoint. We have created two cohorts of about 30, 35 people per cohort of the training and systems thinking with the intent of actually probing the system and seeing where those impediments are so that we can make sure that we can adjust very quickly. The first group, the first cohort have presented to the extended cabinet, cabinet, a series of recommendations that are being reviewed. We're not ready to roll those out yet because they haven't been fully vetted. But it's using people within the system. So for example, these cohorts consist not only of central office staff, but we have quite a few principals and also APs that are in the course to make sure that we have this broad spectrum of input to make sure that we, again, are able to probe the system appropriately. Next slide, please. And so this slide here is what I was talking about, the root cause problems here. Again, we have the folks that are working, trying to resolve, trying to understand what the system level issues are that have prevented us from making significant sustainable achievement. And one of the other things we're doing also, we're taking a look across the country and see where things are being, where some progress is being made, that we might want to replicate. So for example, about three or four weeks ago, Ms. Belcher and I and a couple of other staff members met with a Dr. Wright. She's the Secretary of Education for the state of Mississippi. And so a reason why we reached out to her is because in the national media, there's there's reports that Mississippi is making some, as a state, making significant progress in student reading. And so when we talked with the secretary a few weeks ago, she's been the secretary since 2014. And she said when she arrived there in Mississippi as the Secretary of Education, Mississippi as a state was ranked number 50th in the country in this area. And when she reported to us three weeks ago, three or four weeks ago, that they are now ranked 35th. And so they have made significant progress. She's offered to, for CCSD to inquire with her staff, use the materials that they have used, processes that they have used. So we're doing just that, reaching out to her and others on her staff to figure out what are the things that they have done to be able to sustain that type of growth. The Water Center, that is a nonprofit that is focused on on systems thinking in K-12 systems, trying to understand across the country where some of the challenges are. So that's the group that's training our, the two cohorts that I mentioned. The University of Virginia, the partnership that we have with them, specifically for the acceleration schools, the acceleration school central staff, all the principals were in Charlottesville at UVA last week with their summer, annual summer training. I was fortunate to basement one day with them last Wednesday. So it's an impressive body of work. There are a number of school districts across the country that have participated in this program. The professors up there, folks that are, have done this work in school districts, Charlotte Mecklenburg, other places in the country, Houston ISD. And so we, I'm encouraging the acceleration school principals to continue that work. So those are some of the, some of the examples of the things that we're doing and trying to look at what's happening across the country. I won't get into the next slide, I mean, the next bullet, which talks about the multi-tiered systems of support at the bottom here. I guess I should keep telling you when to go. The top bullet here, where I just talked, go back, go back one. So the top bullet I just talked about, the second bullet here, I won't get into the details. I'll let the, Jackie and her team talk about the levels of support that they're providing to students. And so some of the other things that we're planning to do here, and Jackie and Carolyn, they talk about this, the first two bullets, next slide, please. The next, the first two bullets there, they talk about making sure that we understand where the needs of students are so that we can address both their core, primary, on-level instruction as well. If a child is below a grade level, how do we do the right interventions there? Number three there, the third bullet, I think is really important that parents and that your parents have an opportunity to understand what the data associated with their student achievement, what that data represent and making sure that they understand it so that they could help us, you know, ensure that their children are learning. And then the last bullet here, here, my task is to make sure that, that here in the central office, we have our resources aligned to appropriately support schools and their implementation and also a measure of accountability. Next slide, please. And then the final slide that I would talk about briefly here, it's just making sure that there's a system that we understand, not just as a system, but in our classrooms, exactly what the needs of kids are in terms of where they stand. That's the assessment systems. We have a number of assessment systems. They want to make sure that those tools, when we're assessing the academic position of students, that those tools are easy enough to use and not overwhelming our teachers and our staff. and our staff in schools. Uh, monitor student progress and then uh, as was mentioned in the last uh, presentation, the continuous improvement. So with that, I'll turn it over to uh, Ms. Belcher to uh, start off the next section on the acceleration schools uh, progress.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Maggie, if you go to the next slide, appreciate it. And thank you all for your patience. I am on vacation this week, but wanted to make sure that I was here for this important presentation. The board asked for an update on the acceleration schools with, with the map results that we went over last month and will be uh, revisiting again in this presentation. We also wanted to provide a little more context around other supports that have been in place for the acceleration schools and some of the more qualitative data that we've seen over the last year or so. So this is a reminder for the community and for board members, the acceleration schools was a board-level designation made in just, in, in November of twenty nineteen. At that time, we were talking about schools that were identified for state comprehensive support and improvement, state priority schools, schools with those overall unsatisfactory achievement ratings and student achievement ratings, other than a pay, uh, pre-K to twelve feeder pattern of low performance. So just calling out that at the time there were as some of the most struggling schools and underperforming schools in the state. Uh, Burns Elementary became meeting street at Burns. North Charleston High School was approved as a school of innovation in the summer of twenty twenty-one and will be presenting later on this summer and fall on their results. And the principals of Sanders, Clives and Lumenta are highly experienced and have presented to this board before. And they uh, are leading their own turnaround effort under the supervision of Ms. Simmons and the elementary learning community. Um, Mary Ford is receiving significant support in addition from Ms. Haynes from the early learning community. But the remaining schools report to Ms. Haynes and who's been leading up the acceleration strategy over the last couple of years. Ms. Haynes, if those of you do know, came to us from Tampa and Hillsborough County, where she built her own high school from a D rating to an A rating within three years. Ms. Haynes, I'm going to turn it over to you if that's okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Carolyn. And greetings to the board chair, Reverend Mack, and to all the board members and Superintendent Kennedy. Um, two things attracted me to take on the challenge of school turnaround. Number one was mission critical work. And the intentionality around this board focusing on school turnaround. For a district to focus on school turnaround, that means they're serious about making sure that their schools turn around and that they come off of the state list. The second part of that, prior to coming, I found out that um, there was a partnership already with UVA. And districts that are serious about school turnaround, they partner with others such as UVA to help with that school turnaround process. And I had the opportunity to work with UVA prior to coming to Charleston and had the experience of, of turning around schools in, in Hillsborough County. So we'd like to go to the next slide. So the focus of our agenda today is to share our current student and teacher progress data. And we're going to be very transparent about that, to share our steps towards improving the domain areas of talent management and instructional infrastructure within acceleration schools. And then we have a couple of teacher testimonials that will support the work of our teachers and how our students are doing in acceleration schools. And then what are our next steps? And we'll share that with you. As we go to the next slide, let's talk about acceleration schools and those two areas, talent development and instructional infrastructure. So if we have different results, if we want different results, that calls for a different design. This work, I would like to compare possibly to a marathon or a sprint. I would like to compare it to a marathon, not because of the time it takes, but the fact that we need to have a well-designed plan or roadmap that we don't stray away from, that we're going to stick with it through thick and thin. So having those stretch goals that push us farther and realizing that when we want to abandon our efforts, when we don't see a lot of progress, we're going to stick to it and not give up. And knowing what to do when we turn and find there's a roadblock and what we need to do to move those roadblocks. And they have to be moved immediately because we have to make quick changes. We're in a process of dismantling inequities of our Black, Brown and Lower socioeconomic students that have experienced and they've experienced those inequities over generations. So it does take time to move those inequities. So therefore, we have to have a different design in order to get different results. Today, we will highlight the areas of talent development and instructional infrastructure. Two areas that already align with the superintendent's focus of pillar one, rigorous grade level instruction and instructional infrastructure, and then pillar two, the high-quality teachers leaders, and that aligns with talent development. At a later time, I'll come back and talk about the domains level one leadership and what we're doing in that area as well as climate and culture. And I'll add in today some of the supports that we are receiving from the district. If we go to the next slide, it is important to call out that over the last two years, there have been significant structural changes to support acceleration schools and intentionality of building a stronger school culture and continuous improvement of teaching and learning. So when I arrived, when Ms. Belcher arrived, we were looking at the blue column on the left side. And our team has worked really well with Ms. Belcher and curriculum and instruction to move those structural changes to the left side. So when I started, or when everyone started with this work, we had various curricula that teachers and schools were using. Now we're using one curriculum, Bridges Math, and I am in middle school. And we are using the ELA, EL curriculum. So we're all using the same curriculum. Prior, we had various PLC structures. Everyone was kind of doing their own thing with PLCs. Now we have a structure. We have weekly PLCs in math and ELA. And our principals have taken the time to ensure that those um, PLC meetings are held during the day where teachers can collaborate. The limited planning time, teachers were craving for planning time on the left side. On the right side, we now have three hundred minutes of weekly planning where teachers collaborate. And they have collaboration time after school on Wednesdays where they are compensated. Instead of having one instructional coach that's responsible for knowing ELA and math, we have two instructional coaches in our acceleration schools. One focuses on ELA and one focuses on math, and they can provide teachers with the support they need in either area. Some of our schools have gone, um, elementary schools have instructional planning just for the ELA teachers and just for math. They're departmentalized. So because our teachers have a heavy lift with two curriculums that are, that are very rigorous, some of our teachers only teach ELA and some only teach math, so they can concentrate in those areas. And then we have quarterly PD workshops more often that focus, and they're not optional as they were in the past. These are professional development that teachers are asked to attend. And they are attending because they're getting so much out of that work. We worked with CNI to streamline the curriculum and align our focus on offering rigorous curriculum to our lowest performing students. They're receiving rigor, where in the past, maybe they were not receiving a rigorous curriculum. After listening to our instructional coaches, we were able to clearly define their roles and their responsibilities and how they were supporting teachers and giving feedback. And after listening to our teachers, they were craving additional ELA resources to meet the needs of their students as well as needing that additional planning time. And our principals have continued to push for assessments and data. And we're meeting that need as well within um, working with Buffy and working with our assessment and testing office as well as CNI. So we are making changes and we've definitely done some strong structural um, system level changes. If we could go to the next slide. So let's be transparent about the work. So you have the data in front of you and, and this is what it says. And map testing is only one data point that we're using until our SC-ready results are in. And we are showing some initial evidence that maybe there is some improvement. Um, but we will not know until all of the results are in. But we're not satisfied with the results that we have. So this is after one full year or two years of acceleration, one full year of implementation of EL. Five of our schools maintained or showed improvement with their map reading data. Hungley Park, Mitchell, North Charleston Elementary, Stono Park and Goodwin, and our overall reading total did improve. The EL curriculum does consist of two components. The module component is the, the first component. And the second component is skills block, which is in grades K through two, and all block in grades three through five. We piloted the modules for EL. We did not pilot the skills block as referenced in Fast Bridge or the all block, but next year we will po- we will implement the entire program and we know we will see vast improvement. On our next slide, you will see some of the schools' um, math results. Some of our schools use Bridges for the first time this year. And as a reminder, during COVID, some schools use ZERN. So four schools exceeded their growth from the previous year. But as a whole, we did maintain um, our, our same numbers. Um, Shakura, Hungley Park, Stono, Goodwin are the schools that improved their, their map um, scores. The next slide, that is our middle school and we combined the middle school. The total math scores doubled. They had double-digit gains. Morningside had amazing gains. So they are following the illustrative math curriculum and they're building a stronger foundation for students and they're not looking for quick wins. They're not teaching to math. They are really working on those foundational skills so that when students go to the next grade level and the following grade levels, they will have those skills. And the last slide, reading showed improvement while implementing the new EL curriculum. As you can see, our sixth grade and seventh grade, a slight dip, but eighth grade, a major improvement. And overall, they are improving. And we expect that to go up even next year. SC-ready data will give us a more holistic approach because the students have to do the writing samples and that is not including, included in MAP. As we look at our next slide, we do have a strategic plan and we do have strategies and we work on those strategies. Our partnership with UVA and the Dartmouth School of Business has offered us the opportunity to look at our district conditions. That's at the level on second floor. And we have rich discussions on what needs to change in order to interrupt and disrupt inequities. That team consists of Ms. Belcher, Ms. Woody, um, my partner, Kaylee, Mr. Davis, the superintendent, Terry Nichols, and meetings that should last an hour usually end up lasting a lot longer. Our goal is to close the achievement gap and ensure that every student receives a quality education. And the issue is that has not been the case for our schools that are in this situation. So I work with UVA and PLLE to support myself, other district leaders and the school principals and effective turnaround practices. That's the work that we're doing. This year, we have managed to focus on the two domain areas of talent management and instructional infrastructure. So in simple terms, how are we developing our teachers? Because if we don't develop the teachers and get them to understand what they need to do, then our students are not going to improve. If they don't know what to do, then our students are not going to know what to do. And secondly, are acceleration school students receiving high-quality curriculum and high-quality daily instruction? So I would like to introduce Kaylee Jones, my team member, the team of two. Um, as she speaks about the work that is taking place in these two areas. We also had the support from Michael Carey in um, curriculum and instruction. And in our audience, we have Michael Freeland here from Leading Educators. Kaylee?
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Good evening. Next slide please. As a result of all of our professional development and coaching sessions surrounding the implementation of EL, our teachers are using it with much more confidence. They're closing opportunity gap by providing our students with constant access to grade level materials. If you're looking at the graph, this is, you can see the growth from October to February when we did learning walks with leading educators. However, also our school-based coaches, myself, Ms. Haynes, acceleration school team members have gone in and done walkthroughs with the coaches and with the principals to consistently check in and see where our students are with their implementation of EL. Based on these results, we then provided extra PD for those teachers. Or the school-based coaches would go in and provide one-on-one coaching support with them or create a coaching cycle. They would meet with them weekly, do observations and then come back and check in and adjust and see what next steps they might need to do to continue the support with EL. Next slide please. This is an important information for this slide for a number of reasons, including creating that solid learning environment in which students are able to share ideas and thinking that can foster a stronger student engagement. I know they say a picture says a thousand words, but when you're actually in there, in the moment, you're seeing these students talk to each other. At Simmons Pinkey, there was a group of sixth graders about to do a fishbowl activity discussing a book. One of the sixth grade girls said, oh, I can handle this. I got this. I know exactly what I need to do. In third grade at Goodwin, a little boy, they do this presentation on Peter Pan about how they would rewrite the story. Every student stood up and presented how they would like to have the story of Peter Pan indifferently. And then the students would give feedback. At one point, I was sitting there and Ms. Hayne was sitting in there and a little boy said, I would like feedback from the adults, please. I was like, okay. Well, and then when you're in kindergarten or in first grade, in first grade, they're talking about birds and having these discussions, creating rhymes, trying to figure out how they're going to present these to other students to figure out what bird they focus in on. Having that interaction is what truly embodies the whole idea of student engagement. Can you please take the next slide? So when looking at math, you can see because of the concentrated weekly PLCs and coaching focus, focus on deeply understanding and implementing the curricula, the math shifts and the conditions for mathematical discourse, the math teachers are also able to close that opportunity gap by providing students with consistent access to grade level materials. And as Ms. Hayne said, that's a hundred percent. Some of these schools, there's their first year of implementation. That's huge. That snaps to that, I would say. If you go to the next slide. As you can see on this chart, focusing on the evidence of the math shifts, we had three growth areas. Grade level instruction builds on prior learning and connects to fut- connects to future learning and targets the appropriate aspects of rigor. What we're going to do now is go deeper into the last two areas, the connecting to future learning and really targeting that idea of rigor. That's something that we just kind of, you know, touched on this year, but a goal for next year is really diving into that and helping build the teacher capacities, the coacher's capacities surrounding those two areas. And the next slide please. As I said, in ELA, this is important because students are able to share their ideas and thinking and can foster the stronger student engagement. The exciting thing is, is that some of the protocols that they're using in EL, they can also use in math. So they're having that same discussion across both curricul- So they're having that same discussion across both curricula, which the teachers are so excited about. Or saying, how can I get my students to talk more? What's a protocol I can implement? They're talking to their team to see what can we do to work together to really foster that student engagement and really increase that conversation, discussing, sharing ideas and making the students comfortable with talking about what they're learning. Thank you. I'm going to turn it back over to Ms. Haynes.
So please take a moment to read that slide that is up now. So we have amazing teachers and this quote sums up how we are continuing to support the amazing teachers that we have in acceleration schools. Next, we will share a quick snapshot video into some of the work our teachers have done this year. After the video, we have two live teachers, one from Goodwin and one from Shakora that will share a brief testimonial. Kelly Clements, first grade teacher from Shakora um from Goodwin and Angela Page from Shakora, fourth grade. Can we share the video now?
I think it's important to note here that like the teacher's role is mostly to scaffold and support the students' learning. So while the teacher is prepared to guide the discussion, she's really allowing the kids to um to lead session, providing your support and scaffold to still focus in on the skills being taught.
Well, we talked about how a lot of times in the past, we used to look at like students had gaps. Or in other words, that there was a foundation and you had to make sure they had all those filled in before you moved on. And they were missing the grade-level content and really getting further behind. So you know how important it is to expose them to the curriculum and fill in the gaps as you're going along. But in other words, not making that the number one focus. You've got to have them, you give them the exposure and the experience.
I guess if like we believe they all can learn and can do it and we have, you know, faith in them that they believe they they can do it.
You can find a way so that they can access this. And just to have this opportunity to think about this and our preconceived ideas, because if we go in thinking they can't, they're not going to.
Hook gave up. Just tell me. Okay, it's Peter Pan. It's a good book because it's an adventure book. I hope this made you want to read the book.
Hi, my name is Kelly Clements. I teach at Goodwin Elementary. Um I'm first grade. Um I just want a quick testimonial. While continuing to be an effective teacher with high expectations in an accelerated school, I have grown as a teacher by focusing more on acceleration than remediation. I focus on the present, teaching students grade-level content and providing support for skills from earlier grades. By being a teacher in an accelerated school, I was provided a high-quality curriculum with EL and bridges. That includes equity, each student getting what they need to succeed. Rigor, high expectations, complex texts, high level of questioning and relevance. The modules that you heard spoken about earlier with real-world topics that engage the students. My students see themselves in their learning. My students and families are engaged. If you ever want to know about birds, come visit us. By using the curriculum with fidelity and the PD provided, I am more effective in the way that I internalize the standards through using the internalization documents. Why, how, and what? Due to my growth as an educator, I became a mentor to incoming teachers. My next step is PLC leader for K through two. I was able to grow because of the continuous support. I had ongoing professional development with leading educators that consisted of trainings, walkthroughs, feedbacks, and follow-ups. I was able to work closely with my peers during PLCs uninterrupted. That consisted of internalizing standards, planning, and looking at discussing map and fast bridge data. My students, their families, and myself have seen the growth. And while overwhelming at first, the walkthroughs by our accelerated schools team, the walkthroughs provided feedback for my classroom and my school. I will continue to reflect on my classroom teaching and always have a growth mindset. I look forward to this coming school year. I believed in the curriculum. And I, after seeing my students thrive this year, reaffirms what I've always believed.
Um Angela Page, fourth-grade teacher at Shakora, and I will be serving as PLC leader this upcoming year. I've just completed my sixth year at Shakora. At the end of my fourth year, I felt I had done all I could do there. I wasn't growing and I wasn't helping anyone else grow either. The professional development was all the same and I wasn't learning anything new or useful. My thought was, how can I effectively teach my students and expect them to grow if I don't have the necessary tools? Since I've been in the district, there has been no true reading curriculum. Teachers were pulling resources from anywhere they could find them. Through professional development and internalizations, it showed me as a teacher what I was missing or could have elevated in my instruction. I was given the time to not only collaborate with my grade level, but also with other schools. During this time, I was able to share ideas and talk through challenges with my new peer support system. Our coaches are always there to support us when we need it. And for the next school year, I am looking forward to more learning opportunities to continue moving forward with student growth.
Thank you to our teachers. And in conclusion, our next slide. So over the last two years, you've heard some of the testimonies there. The teachers are using rigorous curriculum. They're receiving that professional development. They have time to plan and to internalize, and they have professional development. Until we see changes in teacher practice and their delivery in instruction, will we see change in student outcomes? And that that's occurring and it will happen. On our next slide. But we acknowledge this isn't enough. There's not, there's growth. We will have more growth, but it does take time with this marathon and we're on the right track. So our next slide. What's next for us? Our work is just beginning. Alignment is in place. Everyone knows the expectations and everyone is holding everyone accountable. Um we discussed the infrastructure next steps. We have to be more intentional on data. We have a data strategist that we're adding that will help our teachers and our team look at data, be intentional with data, and that will drive what happens next with our students. We are refining our work around the see-it, name-it, do-it protocol that the teachers know. And then maintaining that high-touch support for our schools and continuing to invest in our our school leaders. And we know that we have to identify those student gaps so that we can close that achievement gap. And we have a ways to go with that. We will continue, oops, in in August, um our district, well, June, we just spent time at UVA. An entire week exhausting, but it was great work. Um the EL curriculum and acceleration, we will bring that to the board at the next meeting. And in August, our acceleration schools will have a summer institute where they're focused on all block and skills block and the math improvement. Thank you. Do you have questions, I'm sure?
Okay, uh thank you so much, uh Ms. Haynes and your team for the report that you have shared with us today and the work that is underway uh with the uh acceleration schools and we're looking forward uh to seeing those results as they are uh produced inside of our classrooms. We'll take these challenge uh this time now to ask questions. Uh if there is any from any of the members, all right. And then Dr. French.
Sure. So um how many students had a growth target of more than one year's growth in the 2122 school year that met that target? You mentioned growth targets, but you don't define them. So how many of your students in the acceleration zone who had a growth target of more than one year met it?
So I would have to pull those numbers for the total growth targets. How many met? I would have to get those figures for you. Add on each of the graphs, it shows the percentages that met.
But it doesn't, right, but we don't know how many of those students had any accelerated growth targets. So I'd like to see something that shows, you know. Yes, it's important and very valuable that you get one year's growth in one year.
Right.
But again, when we go back to the foundation of the creation of these programs, they were because the kids in there needed more than one year. And I want to know two years later, how many of them are hitting more than one year's growth in your system?
I will get that information for you.
It it's also importantly to call out that when we were putting on the growth targets in the map, it's the map itself, the test sets the growth targets based on typical growth for similar students at that grade level. So the more than a grade level is worth of growth, it'll be interesting to see is where the SC ready data.
Something that you measure and it's a growth test you have at your hands right now. I am very interested in the SC ready scores, but let's let's start with how many kids grew more than one year.
Yes, it doesn't, I think my point to you though, ma'am, is that the growth targets won't show you how many kids grew more than one year just on the loan because they're based on where similar students have set. It's the way that instrument measures growth.
So do we have an instrument that's gonna that's going to demonstrably show us what is on the third page in here where you're showing the need for more than one year's growth? How, what what are you going to use that you can come back and tell us you have done accelerated growth? What tool?
I know that we're, all of our schools are using iReady, reading and iReady math. I feel that that will give us even additional information and we'll be ready to share that. As I mentioned earlier, we have, we need a data strategist, someone that's constantly looking at our data. And and testing and assessment can't just give us someone for ourself. So Buffy is working with our new data strategist that's coming in and they will be assigned to acceleration schools. So we can see that data weekly and every time there is um an assessment, we have to know what our students are doing. Not only will that data strategist assist us, but they're going to go, she's going to go into the schools and help teachers understand what does this data say and what do I need to do with it?
That's awesome. Thank you. I still would like to see how many students accelerated their growth. What's your teacher, what's your teacher retaining percentage this year? How many teachers in these schools are coming back next year?
So that is one of the areas we really want to focus on so we can keep the best teachers at the schools. Um Tanya McIntyre and um Mr. Brigham work with us on the retention. We don't have all of that data in, but I can tell you this, we kept more this year than we did last year.
Start, thank you. I would like that number, though.
Yes, I'll give that to you.
Dr. French and then Ms. Coakley.
Yes, and I second Ms. Coates' desire for having assessments that show that that growth to proficiency and then, so if we don't have the right assessment, we need to figure out how to make it happen. Because it will be really important for monitoring the goal. And the other thing I was going to ask is it, so you say July, you're having, you're going to present some information about EL, acceleration and pilot schools. Is it still the plan, and forgive me if I'm getting this wrong, to implement EL in as many schools as possible this fall?
So Ms. Belcher and CNI will talk about that piece for the remaining schools. Um we implemented the acceleration schools. We were the first to pilot EL. So next year, we will pilot, not really pilot, but we will have the entire program um next year. But there are more schools coming on as a result of um the success we've had with EL. So there are other schools coming on.
So to clarify, you're saying moving from pilot to full implementation in those schools that already have started using it. And you're going to bring on more schools. How many more schools?
So um Carolyn, can you weigh in on this on terms of?
So most, I think we have another um twenty-plus schools joining the full pilot and we're trying to bring in all aspects and out of the gate because I think there's a lesson learned in this last year while we thought it would be an easier lift for teachers to separate the modules from the the skills block or all block. It it seems that we lost something in the translation. Next month, we'll have all that information, Dr. French, and come back with both pilot schools as well as the acceleration schools, sort of sharing that information so that the board students can start to get more familiar with EL as we ultimately ask the board to approve a curriculum change.
That sounds really great and I'm glad you're using your lessons learned in that way. That's fantastic.
All right, Ms. Coakley?
Um I just wanted to clarify that right now, there is no definitive like way that y'all have been measuring accelerated progress, correct? There's no tool that y'all have been using that's been definite?
We've
Jack, if you wouldn't mind, like the, the, it's not that there's no tools. Each of these tools, this is the tricky part about the testing stuff, measures something different. So when we look at the SC ready, we're going to be looking at grade-level performance. So SC ready will give us a sense of whether kids had, how many kids moved from where they were to meeting or exceeding, which could give us a sense to Mrs. Coates' point of who had outside's gains. The way that the map is constructed is it actually compares our kids against a normed reference group of similar kids. So when they do growth, they predict how much they think this kid will grow based on how similar kids have grown in previous years. So when we when we exceed the growth target, that means we had greater than expected growth, but it doesn't necessarily line up nice and neatly to grade-level standards. I mean, this is the challenge in student achievement that there's, it's not every test measures something a little bit different. And that's what we're trying to make sure that we're being very explicit about that, both what it tells us and what it doesn't tell us.
I guess that's why I was asking, because if we like design a program for accelerated schools to help get these kids better, then what tool is it that we're using to measure them? That's not the same tool as everybody else that said that we actually got progress in the last year within the schools. How'd you know that? That makes sense?
No, I'm sorry, ma'am. I don't think I understood your question. I apologize.
Now, I was saying, SC ready and all those other things, that's what we use to actually measure the kids with outside of, like, in other schools. However, in accelerated schools, we actually decided that this is what we're going to do to get these kids moved up. So what tools did you use to measure, to say that they, that you showed progress? That got that got us here. What tool did you use to get us right here that said there's progress in accelerated schools? That wasn't the same tool that was used with everybody else?
It was the same tool that was used with everyone else. We haven't used new tools beyond the observation uh data that Ms. Haynes shared. So there's been a higher level of walkthroughs in those schools in order to report on anecdotal data, which is what those graphs were that Ms. Jones shared. But in terms of student assessments, we're using similar ones. Those schools also have been using the iReady as an adaptive digital technology. And there's an assessment component to that, but other schools in the district also use that.
And I guess that kind of leaves me just a little bit at a loss because if these children were behind and we set up a program to get them ahead, how can we still use the same tools to say that they made progress? And then, again, we've been in a whole year, almost two years of a pandemic, but half these kids weren't even going to school. So how can we say that this was actual measurable progress and what tools did we use? I mean, like, how can we still use the same iReady and SC ready that we use for everybody else for children that we already deemed behind?
Well, I, I think, Ms. Coakley, so a couple of challenges. One, as I indicated briefly, there are multiple assessment tools within the district that we're using. And so we're trying to, we're working, not trying, but we're working to refine which one's going to be the best tool for teachers to use to measure their, assess where their students are. And so whatever tool that we, tool, a set of tools that we land on, those tools will be able to, to assess or measure kids from, from different schools. We won't, we won't have a, a tool specifically just for acceleration schools. We would have one that can be applied against the, to the acceleration schools versus non-acceleration schools. So the, so the challenge is trying to figure out which assessment tool works best for CCSD, which set of tools work best for CCSD, and then we apply those tools across the board. And so that's, that's part of the work that's, that's taking place. And now, as part of some of the work that, when Ms. Hayes talked about the work that, in the, in the, the learnings that they have at UVA that they're encouraging us to do. And then we're also looking at other districts that are using various tools, including here in South Carolina. So, so I would imagine over the next couple of months or so, we would come back to the board with where we are with those analysis, on the tools, the assessment tools that we'd be using.
Any other questions?
This is sort of technical, I guess, but, but with the map, the way that Ms. Belcher was describing how to use the map tools to set targets. If you're normally setting targets based on how similar students do in previous years, if you want to do higher than normal growth, you could, could you just set higher targets? You know, for instance, we tend to expect a dip in the winter for whatever reason. Maybe the target is not to have that dip. You know, I, I feel like there are ways to use map, you know, creatively to help you get, you know, do those stretch goals within the year.
I would definitely agree, Dr. French, and Ms. Roberts was texting me around some of the growth projections that I didn't want to make, I wanted to make sure that we were clear that the data we reported out in terms of growth and the percentile points that Ms. Haynes was using to compare previous years, is, is that measure against similar students of growth versus us setting a target above what the map has set as its growth target? So maybe it's technical, but it, it could be misconstrued as tied to grade level expectations, but in that case, it's not. But we can come back after further analysis of some of the growth projections that are math. And then we anticipate SC ready at the latest in September, which will obviously give us a clear report cut out against grade level standards in South Carolina.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Haynes.
Thank you.
And your team, I should say.
Team, and my team is expecting and will be not out of commission for a month, so it'll be a team of one.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Belcher. Okay. Item 11A. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend, I mean, I make the motion to approve the reallocation of funds that's shown in the attached resolution, unless there are some questions.
Okay, move by Ms. Green, second by Ms. Darby. Are there any questions? Hearing none, message please, cast your vote. Here must have got turned off or something. Got an item passes. Item 11B.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend a move that we approve the reallocation of funds that's shown in the attached resolution.
Second.
Move by Ms. Green, second by Ms. Darby. Are there any questions? Hearing none, message please, cast your vote. Got a motion passes. A lot of, item 11C.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask Mr. Barrow if he would just brief us on the reallocation of these funds. We need to, we need this money right now for the IT project. But as it pertains to D4, I want to, want him to discuss that in a little, in, in, in short order.
Okay, Mr. Barrow, if you can just give us a brief overview.
Thank you for having me back. Thank you, Ms. Green. Short order, huh?
Whatever.
I was hoping to talk about the history of this.
Yeah, you could.
So, so let me talk about the, the short part of it. To your point, the funding is needed now. There is not, there, there is a need to complete the North Charleston project in order to allow for the cafeteria expansion. That work has to begin right now. If the money is not reallocated, that work will not be done this fall. The cafeteria expansion will slide to next summer. These were the funds that were available that could be executed right now. So that was the reason why the funds were chosen from this former project to move to this project. So there is a need. It was the quickest way to get funds in. If it's delayed another month and we move funds from somewhere else, that project will not be, be done on time. Now, to athletic improvements, I'll try to be as brief as possible. I arrived here seven years ago, and I will say that the focus of our capital program was on schools and rightfully so. We spent a significant amount of time and effort to burn our schools up. We had an athletic improvement project in that phased sales tax program. I went to, there was no planned place to execute the athletic improvements project. I went to each principal of all of the schools in our district and received a list of projects. And over the course of the next four years, those projects were executed, including all projects in District Four that were asked by those principals. In that program also included the District Four Stadium, the District Two Stadium, and, and, and those projects were completed as well. A track was not completed in North Charleston, and a track was not completed in District Two. The track in District Two was already there, and we built a stadium around it. We believed at the time that we had enough track capacity in North Charleston to handle the teams that we had. We have a new track at Stall. We have the old track, which is in perfect order at Linda Davis Field behind Northwoods. We constructed the Military Magnet track, and we thought we had an opportunity to refurbish Danny, Danny Jones' track. And that was my mistake for not following through to make sure that that track wasn't slated for demolition. My initial discussions with North Charleston were that it was going to be renovated. I do see people walking at it all the time. And my initial discussions with North Charleston that it was, was going to be done, and we thought we could apply some resource to that. Again, that is my fault for not following through with, with the city of North Charleston to make sure that was going to happen. So where, where do we go from here? In the, in the fall of last year, we developed a capital maintenance plan for athletics. The board approved that in December. That's the first time we've dedicated capital maintenance funds from now. We got early out funds for this year, you all approved, through 2028. There's more than a million dollars worth of projects at Academic Magnet. Those projects have been given to the principal for review. The projects being executed this year, I actually reviewed with Ms. Hand on January 27th and with the, with the principal. Unfortunately, again, the Danny Jones track did not happen. The $350,000 could not be applied right now to Academic Magnet Athletics because of the deeper dive that's needed. There's never been a master plan or a gap analysis for the four District Four high schools. That plan was being developed. Mr. Crumps presented that to the athletic director, myself. We asked for improvements to that. Once we complete that, we will go to each of the high school principals to look at the potential long-range improvements, which includes those projects in the capital maintenance plan, which I don't want to execute yet until we look at the long-term vision for those four schools. Our goal would be to come back to this board with a recommendation for funding out of excess revenues for the Phase Five program next year, once we determine with the principals what improvements will take place. And we've got some specific changes to Academic Magnet to try to make full use of the limited space they have on that campus. We want to present that to the principal. And we also want to present to all of the North Charleston principals, long-term shared use for other facilities. They are short baseball and softball at the game, at the game level. And I'll also say that there's still obviously a potential need for some track. So that's what I'm proposing at, at this point.
Thank you, Jeff. I just thought it was necessary for us to kind of address that today since that was on, on the agenda and with all the information we've gotten about D4. Does anyone have any questions for Jeff or me? Probably Jeff, but Laura.
Can we not use Esser funds for the technology upgrades to North Charleston High?
My understanding is that the funds don't qualify for, for Esser. And the Esser funds, I believe, are allocated, but let me turn it over. I hope I didn't say something I'd turned to the CFO.
Right, Jeff. So, so one, it's not an allowable expense for the utilization of the grant, the Esser grant dollars. And then, two, the Esser funds are already reallocated. So, no, the short answer is there's no capacity there or, and it's not allowable.
Okay, is there a motion on item 11C?
A motion that we approve the transfer of funds.
Second.
Okay, move by Ms. Green, second by Ms. Darby. Are there any further questions on that motion? Hearing none, message please, cast your vote. Got that motion passes. Item 11D, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have motion to approve the distribution of the Laura Brown Special Board Funds as submitted.
Second.
I think those kids have already traveled.
Okay, move by Ms. Green, second by Ms. Darby. Are there any questions? Hearing none, message please, cast your vote. Got that motion passes. Item 11E, the second reading of the FY '23 budget.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval.
Second.
Are there any questions? Hearing none, message please, cast your vote. Got that motion passes. Item 11F is the disparity study update.
And that's provided for information. From what I understand, we should get a, a report, whether it's final or not, in August. Is that right, Shauna? Some?
Yes, ma'am. We're aiming for August. If that date changes, we'll recalibrate and represent that.
Okay, thank you. Item 11G is the 135-day enrollment update, shared as information is included in your packet. Is there any information, any questions in reference to the 135-day enrollment updates? Kind of like, item 11H is the Esser reporting application.
Also provided as information on, yeah.
I did have a question.
All right, sure, absolutely. Dr. French?
So I'd, I'd actually submitted a question to Shauna earlier, and I'm not sure I got a response. Is there a way to include vendors in this? Or does that have, just have to be cross-referenced with a financial, monthly financial transparency report?
So, so all of the, so there's, the Esser, you're talking about the Esser three initiatives or the Esser reporting application?
The app, reporting application.
Okay, so the, as of right now, it does not show vendor information. The, the application hasn't been developed to include that, but we can look into including it. If not, it'd be a separate procurement report that we could pull for you.
Okay.
Okay, item 11I is the Esser three initiative.
Members of the board, you have in front of you the brief that we provided to Audit and Finance Committee this month on the next round of Esser investments. I just wanted to point out, key to what we plan to get underway, or have already gotten underway, include the pre-K expansion, both with the infrastructure and with personnel to support that. Also, within the brief that we provided, Audit and Finance is a, a budget for the activities within the D20 PCP program, which you got a brief on at the committee of the whole, so the details of that program or what you were provided earlier. I, I will say that also that previously the board has asked for details of where the FTEs are relative to district level and school levels. If you recall, it provided that the committee of the whole, of the whole meeting, a list of where those FTEs, FTEs are within our plans that at a district level as opposed to the school level, as opposed to acceleration school level, so that level of details within that. The last thing I want to point out is we want to start our execution plan for all of the activities that are not FTE-related within the school proposals, and begin to work on those activities as well.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hayne. Question, Ms. Green?
Can, can you give us an idea about those other allocations? When you think we, you might be able to provide us with information on the non, the, the, the ones that are not related to positions?
Oh, for the. Let me, let me, if I may, ask Ms. Williams to address that. She, she and her team been working on the process for the non-FTE. So it's probably.
So, so Ms. Green, thank you for the question. We are in the process of reconciling between FTE and non-FTE-related expenses associated with Esser, so we can provide that breakout subsequently and bring it to Audit and Finance and queue it up for the board.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ms. Coates?
Mr. Hammer, can you tell us the dollar figures attached to this report? Which of these dollar figures are embedded in the budget and which of the dollar, these dollar figures are in addition to what has been embedded in the budget?
Those are all part of our $163 million.
I'm talking about the 23 budget, yeah.
I can speak to that, Ms. Coates. So, so Esser is, is the, the general operating fund. None of the funds are commingled there. The Esser dollars are captured under special revenues in the budget book.
Right. I'm, I'm asking if the 6.8 million, just, or the 4 million for pathways to teaching, is it in the budget that just got approved, or is that money that's going to be spent in addition to the budget we just approved?
It's in the budget that you just approved.
Does that answer hold the same for all these expenses?
It does. Everything on this, this Esser three initiative.
Perfect, thank you.
So, so that's, for clarification, so the budget book contains the general operating fund, and it contains all of the special revenues, revenue funds.
I just did not realize you were embedding the Esser funds for the school plans that have not yet been finalized because I don't know how you would know those expenses.
It's, so what we took were the school submitted plans and to build the budget, but the entirety of the Esser funds is represented.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you. Eleven J is the monthly financial report. It's included as information. Are there any questions? Item eleven K is the capital project report. It's included in your packet for information. Are there any questions? Hearing none. We move down to item twelve A, uh policies. Is there a motion?
Yes, I move to approve the second reading of policy I G.
Second.
Moved by Dr. French, second by Ms. Hederick. Are there any questions about the motion? Hearing none. Who has to please cast your vote? Okay, that motion passes. Consent agenda items was approved at the beginning of the meeting. Once the agenda was approved, upcoming board meeting, uh June twenty-ninth and thirtieth is the board governance training with the Council of Great City Schools. And Ms. Hederick has some comments in reference to that.
So this will take place at North Charleston CES. We'll send out parking instructions. We're also going to have buffet style meals for breakfast and lunch. Um so got a great team coming. Nine to two. There will be a Zoom link for some people that have to leave a little early.
North Charleston CES, not one stash.
That's right.
Okay.
And our next uh board meeting will be on July eighteenth. That'll be a combined committee of the whole and a regular board meeting. Entertaining motion for adjournment. This meeting is now officially adjourned.